Good evening and welcome to the December 20th meeting of the Select Board for the Town of Millis. I have with me tonight our Vice Chair Erin Underhill, immediately at my left, and Craig Schultz, our Clerk. Welcome to everyone. We have a number of things on the agenda tonight. First, a few announcements. We, as you may recall, last meeting, recognized the boys, the men's, if you will, soccer team, both their physical and mental prowess. And in the future, we hope to recognize some of the National Merit Scholars who were identified in a recent edition of the paper, and perhaps some National Honor Society members who were being inducted tonight. So we'll keep you up informed, and hopefully you'll join us for those. We will be discussing a number of things this evening, excuse me, with this mask, I get stuffed up. Dealing with COVID and a number of other issues going on in town. So what I'd like to do is probably start with the COVID status from our Board of Health Director, John McVeigh, who will give us an update discussing mask policy and so forth. John, welcome.
Good evening, Select Board members, Chair Germaine, John McVeigh, Director of Public Health, Millis. So to start, some of the good news is that vaccination rates are very good in Millis. Just to give you an idea, you know, for the high, for the high-risk groups, we're, you know, north of 90%. For the general population, 85%. We're still working on the younger groups from 5 to 12, as we know. The states, so, you know, we're at 85%, just say, we'll put that down as a percentage. The state's at 70, and the national is at 60. So Millis is doing quite well with the vaccination status. To go over, obviously, we have the new variant that's out. Delta was the predominant variant, currently still is, 98%. Omicron is catching up. Research shows that it may be milder than Delta, so that might be a plus in our favor. I know a lot of questions swirl around some of the holiday activities and what we should be doing to promote COVID safety in general, you know, just to relieve the transmission or to push it down as far as possible. Those recommendations, obviously, is vaccination number one. People who aren't vaccinated, they should be vaccinated and boosted accordingly. There is a recommendation for pre, you know, holiday, like, you know, if you've got holiday parties and whatnot, gatherings, to be tested ahead of time, especially if they're vulnerable people in the population that you're going to visit. You know, that testing, you know, the antigen testing, the at-home testing would be advisable. Mask wearing, that goes without saying, especially if there's vulnerable populations in the household. Ventilation is key. You know, if you can get ventilation, cross-ventilation, you know, temperature-dependent, but that's always a good thing. Hand sanitizer, great to have that. Another suggestion would be to limit the time. You know, you limit time, you limit exposure. So instead of having maybe, you know, a five-hour, six-hour holiday party, it goes down to three hours. So that's a suggestion, a recommendation. Limiting people, you know, obviously, the lower the numbers, the lower the chances of transmission and whatnot. So those are some of the general recommendations for holiday safety, especially if you go into the winter months, that we expect some increasing numbers, which we are getting. We are, right now, getting numbers that are increasing. Incidence rates are up. We have positivity rates that are up. And this could be, well, it's projected to go up as time goes on, especially with the new variant, which is extremely transmissible. Omicron apparently is even, you know, thresholds more transmissible than Delta, which was extremely transmissible. So we have an issue there, but hopefully that virus has less morbidity and mortality associated with it, which it seems to, as I mentioned before, it does. Masking policies, it's always advisable as public health in these months where, you know, you're indoors and so forth, especially in crowded areas. The advice is to wear masks in crowded areas or public spaces. Advice. Obviously, the town of Randolph, I'm sorry, that's my old town, Millis. Standing to lose things here. Town of Millis, the municipal buildings require masks, so, and that's still in effect and will be in effect, I would say, for the foreseeable future, probably at least until, I'd say, March, but that's just a guess. Whether this changes and we go to, you know, it's mandating more mask policies as time goes on, and we'll have to look at the numbers and look at the morbidity and mortality of the virus and the effectiveness of vaccines and the variant, and we can go from there. But presently, that's where we stand today in Millis. I think we're in decent shape, you know, in comparison relatively, and, you know, we've talked to the contact tracing nurses. Cases are up, but we don't see the hospitalizations and the morbidity and mortality that we saw in the past. So that's a good thing.
Great.
Chair Germaine?
Yes.
If I may have a question?
Please.
So while our numbers sound good in all, which is great, and hopefully people are getting their kids in and getting more vaccinated, you know, there's been, as you know, a spike, and there's been a bit of a spike in the schools. So my question would be, while it's not necessarily raging through Millis in a deadly fashion, there is a lot of transmission. Would it make, would it make sense, even though it seems early, to consider having other buildings in town require masks?
Presently, I mean, I would say in advisory, and I would make that an advisory, that public indoor spaces would, it would be their best interest to do so in these months ahead, as opposed to a mandate. Most surrounding cities and towns, and I just got some information today, actually, from, Empac, from Mike Gazinski, and it shows, you know, a map, area map, of exactly what towns are doing, surrounding towns are doing. And by and large, they're not changing the masking standards. In fact, we're ahead of the curve with the municipal masking mandate in municipal buildings. I've talked to area, you know, health departments and so forth, and there doesn't seem to be consensus to do any type of public, indoor public space masking until time goes on or the state or DPH gives more guidance in that direction. So that's currently where we're at. Things can change very rapidly within the next, you know, three to four weeks, depending on, especially the new variant that's coming up, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions in the audience? Scott?
Thank you, Scott Fuzie-Fore-Llewyn Union. I just want to thank John. I think it's been a tough two years. I think he's done a good job with getting the information to the public, you know, you know, working down the store, we've seen it hands-on, and, but, I mean, I think the town's done a great job. Compared to cities and larger communities, we're in good shape, and I think just keep monitoring and keep doing the great job that you're doing, and we appreciate it, John. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. I will make a comment more personal than anything. We've had several people we know who did not get vaccinated and have, up to this point, not had a problem. They've all now caught the new variant. So it's, it does seem to be much more contagious in that regard, but just from my personal experience, so. Okay. Given that, thank you very much for the update, and I guess we take away the information that it's always best to play it on the safe side. Stay masked whenever possible, keep your distance, and try to stay in rooms without too much crowding and with open air as much as possible.
Sorry, one more question?
Yes, please.
Hold on. So if it would make sense to put some kind of an advisory out, is there something official we need to communicate to the businesses in town that we would like to recommend that perhaps they ask people to mask up, if possible? Is there something we should, like, is there some kind of poster we can give to them, or is something that, you know, gently recommends that action?
Yeah, I mean, we could put something on the website. I'll talk to the Board Chair, the Board of Health Chair, just to make sure we're all on the same page with that. I don't, I'm not sure if we require a board meeting, if it's coming from the board, per se, like an emergency meeting, or else it can be done as an advisory. It might just be more informal, per se, than a mandate. So with that being said, I think, you know, web presence, maybe social media presence with that, and, you know, mailing to the key businesses in town that especially have large
Like gyms, places like that.
Customer, yeah, gyms, perfect example, you know, larger, places where people congregate more indoors
Yeah.
And have, you know, this is higher risk, is an advisory. I don't think it can hurt, it can only help, to be honest with you. And it just gets people aware that, as we get into these months, that, you know
It's not over.
It's not over, and, you know, this, 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 actually, if they do this, it may help lower the numbers and help us, help keep us going to the next level.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
But it's also important to note that the hospitalizations are up, so beds are becoming fewer and more difficult to find, so. Try to stay safe, everyone. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Good night.
Next item is, we have here the approval of a memorial bench which is being donated to the town, and I'm going to ask that our town administrator introduce this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a proposal from Megan Troweliger, I'm sure I'm probably not
Close, close.
Okay. Who's a close friend of the Morris family. Mr. Paul Morris had also come in to see us about the possibility of getting a memorial bench for his late wife, Terry Morris, who was the owner of Pretty Paw's Pet Salon. They were looking at donating a bench to put at the Grove Street Park by Richardson Pond, and, you know, I've taken a look at the pictures, as well as our DPW director, and we think it's, it would be a beautiful location, and we certainly can work with them to actually put in a concrete pad there for the bench in the spring. So it's something that they're requesting the board's approval on. I think we have Ms. Troweliger here to, I don't know if you have any comments you want to have for the board?
If anybody has questions, I'm happy to answer them. If nobody's got to come up to that, sorry.
No, it's okay.
I didn't, I don't have anything else extra to say, but if anybody had any questions about it, she was a, she owned the business on Exchange Street for just about 20 years. So we wanted to keep everything in Millis, so she, you know, has her, her family, her friends, her, her clients all have a place to go. It's right down the street from where her shop was, so it's easily accessible. We also enjoyed that spot particularly because the access to the bench physically for any of her elderly clients who may want to come is very easy. It's just flat and right there, so it's just a really great spot. We're hoping to get that.
I think that's absolutely terrific, and we really appreciate it. I'm going to ask the board for comments and questions.
Sure. I'm very sorry for your loss. I didn't know her, but I did read a lot following her passing, and she sounds pretty incredible, so
She was.
Yeah, so I'm really sorry, and it's a beautiful thing that you guys are doing to donate this bench, and I was assuming the location had the same reasons, and it does, it sounds great, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a great donation. I think it's a great thing to do, and as soon as the weather turns and you can pour concrete
Awesome.
I look forward to seeing it up.
Awesome.
Okay, well, given that, I'll take a motion to approve the donation of the bench.
I move that we approve the memorial bench donation.
Craig?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to approve the donation for a memorial bench. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, and we think it's very nice. You will have some kind of a plaque there or something?
Yeah, it's written on.
There will be a plaque right on the bench. It's like a wooden slat bench with cast iron side, and then there's a plaque on it.
Excellent.
Just a memorial to her with her name and who she was.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, it's actually, it's here, Pete. It says, "In loving memory of Terry Eisner Morris, daughter, sister, wife, mother, friend, owner of Pretty Paw's Pet Salon."
That's great.
It's really nice.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Department of Public Works, and it's appointment of Department Assistant One. So I'm going to ask Mr. McKay and Mr. Gazinski to brief us on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. Kathleen White, I think she's with us here, I think.
She was on, yes, she was on the Zoom.
Interviewed this past week, and she's filling the position as a Department Assistant One. That position's been vacant for quite a while. It's, and I think we have the right candidate, so I would ask that the town administrator appoint Catherine White, starting, in your letter, it says the 20, but we're going to change that to the
January 3rd.
We're going to change that to January 3rd. We just think it'd be better as a new year, instead of coming in a week before.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would, following up with the statement of Mr. McKay, I do enthusiastically request that the board ratify my appointment of Kathleen White to, for Department Assistant One in the Department of Public Works, effective January 3rd, subject to a physical.
Okay. I'll take a motion on that. First of all, I'll ask if there are any questions or concerns?
No.
No.
And from the audience, anything? And I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we ratify the town manager's appointment of Kathleen White as DPW, what's the position?
Department Assistant One, please.
Yeah, lost it in the letter. Thank you.
Before I second it, I'll amend to say, position would begin January 3rd, 2022, pending a physical.
Okay, so moved and seconded, are we going to have to get a query for her?
It's already been done.
It's already been done, okay. Just asking?
Yep.
She's setting up a physical, so she's
Moved and seconded?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is appointment of Department Public Works Office Manager. Again, Mr. McKay and Mr. Gazinski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This position is, is going to finally finish out the reorganization of the department's, what can we say, upper echelon or managerial part of the department. This position will oversee the office, day-to-day operations of the, of the office. It will also assist with budgetary. We're looking to bring a lot of stuff back in-house that we, that we outsource right now to engineering firms, mainly bidding processes, and, and, and we'll definitely manage our new work order system that we've had in place for a year, but now we, you know, with this position, we can finally actually have somebody to oversee it, the day-to-day operations of that work order system. We did interview two great candidates, in-house candidates, that, from the town hall that applied for this, and after a discussion with the town administrator, we have come to the decision that Ms. Deirdre Gilmore, Deirdre's been working in the Department of Public Works for over 16 years, and she's had, has the knowledge of the, already knows the day-to-day operations of the department. So I would ask that, that we do appoint her effective, once this vote is in place, because we've been waiting for a long time for this position to be put in place. There's no, she's already done her physicals as an employee. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here tonight. I don't think she's on there. I know she had a doctor's appointment in Boston, and that's why she couldn't attend tonight.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to request that the board ratify my appointment of Deirdre Gilmore as the Office Manager for the Department of Public Works, effective immediately.
Any questions, comments from the board? Then I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we ratify the appointment of the town administrator for Deirdre Gilmore, I've known her for so long, I'm just remembering her name now, as Office Manager for the DPW, effective immediately.
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded to recognize the appointment of Deirdre Gilmore as, for the Department of Public Works Office Manager, to become effective immediately. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is the appointment of an on-call firefighter intern, so I don't know
Mr. Chairman, I would ask to defer that to the fire chief, who's on the line.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking here, not realizing, chief, but, please, go.
Good evening, and I'll make this as quick as I can. Back in August, I was contacted by Andrew O'Reilly, graduate of Millis High School. He's currently a junior at Mass Maritime, studying emergency management. I'm looking to do an internship with the Millis Fire Department. After talking with him, we found out that he is already studying firefighting with the onset fire department through Mass Maritime, and he's become a certified as a firefighter one and firefighter two. Those are prerequisites that we have to be on our department. So after speaking with him, we thought maybe it'd be a good idea, with the last open position we had as a call firefighter, is to appoint him, have him accomplish his internship, but also we would get some benefit because he would become an on-call firefighter for us while he's home on break during summers. And again, he's a junior, and after he graduates, you know, we still utilize his skills. He's a very bright young man. I think he's going to be great to have around during his internship, and we hope to, you know, help him attain his goals of working in the fire service or emergency management. So I would recommend that Mr. Gazinski to appoint Andrew O'Reilly as an on-call firefighter, pending a query, physical, physical agility, and the passing of his firefighter one and two testing.
That sounds excellent. I assume
Drive screen two, correct?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes, okay, sorry.
I'm assuming there's budget available for this?
Yep, it's an open position that we have, as the last open call fire position we have that's unfilled.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please, Mr. Gazinski.
Upon the fire chief's recommendation, I would ask that the board ratify my appointment of Andrew O'Reilly as, as an on-call firefighter with the Millis Fire Department, per the requirements as stated by the chief.
Okay, I'll take a motion. If you have any questions first?
No, none. Okay.
I'll make a motion to ratify the town administrator's appointment of Andrew O'Reilly as a call firefighter, pending the query, the agility testing, and the other required items as outlined by the chief.
Second.
So moved and seconded to ratify the appointment of the town administrator for Andrew O'Reilly to our inter, as an intern in the fire department for the various position that he was just described, and that he needs to pass his query, physical and physical acuity, as noted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you, chief. Next item on the agenda is appointment of Department Assistant One for Recreation.
Mr. Chairman, we do have the Director of the Recreation Department on the Zoom.
Ah, yes, in your Christmas red.
Ms. Fogarty.
Hi there, folks.
So I would defer to her.
Can I go?
Yes.
Yes.
I would like to strongly have the town administrator highly recommend Erin LeBlanc for the 10-hour-a-week position, Department Assistant One, and in the Recreation Department, Ms. LeBlanc has been working as the team program coordinator since September, as well as doing a phenomenal job as a fill-in for the summer camp. She's done an impressive job in her duties thus far, and I'm confident this will make a smooth transition with these additional responsibilities.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And based upon the recommendation by the Recreation Director, and also upon the great things I've heard about Ms. LeBlanc and her performance so far within the department, I would ask that the board ratify my appointment of Ms. LeBlanc to the 10-hour-a-week Department Assistant One position within the Recreation Department, with the stipulations as stated.
Sure. Is she with us this evening?
She is.
She is.
Erin is right there in the upper left-hand corner.
I'm sorry, I can't read at that angle, so I apologize.
You can unmute, Erin.
So, okay, well, sounds
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, Erin.
How's it going?
Okay. Do you have any comments or anything you'd like to say?
Um, just that I'm, I'm super grateful for the opportunity. I, thus far, I'm, I'm loving my job as the team program coordinator. I feel very lucky to have Chrissy at the helm. I've learned a lot from her. She's, she's an incredible boss. I'm glad that I get to share the space with her, and I hope to continue to learn, but then, at the same time, also contribute to the functionality of the rec department. So I, I'm super grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask the board members, if you have any comments, questions?
No, I have none.
I'll move to
The audience, do you have any comments or questions?
She rocks.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Okay, hold on.
Chief Barrett.
Oh, I'm sorry, chief.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. I just want to throw in my support for Erin. I've been lucky enough to work with her on several projects. She's an asset to the town. She's going to be an asset to the rec department, and her and Chrissy together are going to do really fantastic things for the rec, the rec department, so just wanted to throw that in there. Good luck, Erin.
Well, that's quite an endorsement, I must say, so, on that note, I will take a motion.
Sure. I move to ratify the town administrator's appointment of Erin LeBlanc for the 10-hour-a-week Department Assistant One position in the Recreation Department, pending any requirements as noted.
Yes, I'm not sure if we have any, I think the query and physical, were they done for the, so I think
She just had them recently, so
So I think we're all set.
Okay.
She's had them within the last four months, so we're all set.
Okay.
Second. Okay, so moved and seconded to recommend the appointment of Erin LeBlanc for 10-hour-a-week Department Assistant One in the Recreation Department, per the recommendation of the town administrator. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Erin, welcome aboard. You have quite a following here. Next, we have the appointment of an on-call snow removal worker.
Nope.
No.
Recreation committee.
I'm sorry.
Keep going.
Oh, appointment of Recreation Committee, oh, hey, look, you can't, hang on. Okay, Recreation Committee members, two of them, so I'm going to, again, go to Mr. Gazinski to start with.
And actually, Mr. Chairman, I will, I will defer this to our Recreation Director. I did get a memo from her, asking that the board appoint Steven Smith and Joyce Boyardi to the Millis Recreation Committee. Both of these residents are enthusiastic about joining the committee. Both Mr. Smith and Ms. Boyardi are longtime residents and are looking forward to serving on the Recreation Committee. This has been discussed with Tim Davis, the Chair, and he has agreed that this would be a great fit for the committee and the community, and I don't know if Ms. Fogarty has any further comments before, and I believe, I don't know if both candidates are here this evening, or
I'm here.
Ms. Boyardi is here.
Ms. Boyardi is.
Chris is here.
Is Stefan there?
Steven.
Steven.
What? S.T.E.P.A.N.S. I thought Stefan, but, okay. What can I say? Okay. Given that Given that, are there any other comments, questions from the board? Okay, then I'll take a motion.
I move that...
Did you ask her, Chrissy, what she wanted to say?
Oh, did she want to say something?
Any comments?
Did somebody raise a hand?
No, I guess she's all set.
Okay. So I move that we appoint Mr. Stephen Smith and Ms. Joyce Boyardi to the Millis Recreation Committee.
Second.
So moved and seconded to appoint Stephen Smith and Joyce Boyardi to the Millis Recreation Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Welcome to the committee. Thank you very much for volunteering, seriously, that's really appreciated.
It's great, I can't, I couldn't ask to work with better people.
Well, you know, make sure you understand what happens when you play pickleball with her.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah. I see you.
I've heard stories, yes.
Okay, this is great, thank you so much. Okay, now I'm going to get to the appointment of an on-call snow removal worker.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Gazinski.
Yes. As I'm sure the board's aware, we have been trying to recruit on-call snow removal folks to do the hand shoveling and so forth around the municipal buildings. These have been very difficult positions to fill. And we still are recruiting applicants at this time. However, we have had another applicant step forward, Mr. William Buree. Full disclosure, is the son of Karen Buree, but she had no part in the recruitment or application process. And I do know William, and I believe he will be excellent in this position. And he will be reporting, should the board ratify the appointment, he will be reporting to Mr. McKay for any snow removal duties should he be called in. So I would ask that the board ratify my appointment of Mr. Buree for on-call snow removal for the town buildings. And this would be subject also to a Corey and a physical.
Okay. Any comments on the board, questions? Mr. McKay, anything you... Nope, okay. Then I'll take a motion, understanding that we have some knowledge of who Mr. Buree is.
I move that we appoint William Buree for on-call snow removal pending a Corey and physical.
Second.
So moved and seconded to appoint Mr. William Buree for on-call snow removal pending Corey and physical. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, and I'll just use this opportunity also to pitch and sell out to the community. If there's any other applicants out there, we are looking for other applicants for on-call. So if there are any other applicants out there, we ask that they fill out an application and come forward. And we are still taking applications for that position.
Great, thank you. Okay, next item, I think, is review approval of a catch basin cleaning contract. So I'm going to ask Mr. McKay to brief us on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and of course, I didn't bring the paperwork, but you must have it in front of you. This is for our annual catch basin cleaning contract. We're a member of the Mass Municipal Association, and the price per catch basin for us was a little too steep this year with that bid, so we did re-advertise it, and we came up with this, and it's much more acceptable within our, we usually contract the 16,000 in our budget. And this is right in line with what is within the budget, in the stormwater budget. So luckily, it came in at that price. So I would ask that the board, if they allow the Town Administrator to sign a contract, which I think we have the full contract from TruX Corporation in the amount of not to exceed 16,146 dollars.
Do we know TruX?
Yes, oh, he's been cleaning them since I've been here.
Just asking, so that we have that.
Yep.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions from the board?
Nope.
From the audience? Yes. Please come up and identify yourself.
Name is Bob Velches at 1465 Main Street, Millis Used Auto Parts. I just, for a point of reference, I was wondering how many catch basins that would be, and do they take the material away? Does that include the disposal of material?
I'm going to leave that to Mr. McKay.
Sure, so there's 964 catch basins in Millis, right below 1,000 catch basins. They do not, we keep the material here, we're lucky that we still have a tree farm in back of Island Road that we can still maybe get maybe three, four more years out of stockpiling this. So that brings the price down dramatically, I mean, we're talking 10, 12 dollars per catch basin if they had to remove it. You would have to go through different procedures of drying the muck that comes out of the catch basins out and before they could haul it away. But that's a good question, and no, we keep it all here.
Given that, we only have maybe three or four years left. Have we got any planning in place for how we're going to handle that?
Yes, we would go back up into that almost 25, 28-dollar catch basin. What would the contractor would be, would have to give him a space probably at the transfer station. As they brought the refuge back in from the basins, they would put them in drying bins all along, and the water would run off. We would have to keep it in a retention basin that the water wouldn't contaminate anything else. So we are looking, we would definitely look into it as we get a little closer.
Yeah, I just don't want to see us caught at the last moment, but I'm sure you're well ahead of the curve.
Yep, nope, nope.
Are there any other comments or questions?
No, no.
Okay, the audience, okay, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the Town Administrator to sign the contract with TruX Corporation for the cleaning of the catch basins in town for not over, what did you say, 60,500?
146.
16,146.
Second.
So moved and seconded to allow the Town Administrator to sign a contract with TruX Corporation for cleaning the catch basins in the town for a contract not to exceed 16,146 dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. McKay?
Thank you.
So next, you're up for a little bit. The next item is our DPW Building Project Status Update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The DPW project, the staff wing of the building is complete. Staff are moving into it as we speak, so we can finish the demolition of the area in the garage. We want to try to get that all done because owner's risk management, is that it, Karen, am I saying it? The insurance, we don't want to, we do not want to have to insure the inside of occupancy of the garage area and pay insurance on the brand-new building. So we're actively trying to get that demolished by the first of the year. And we will get that done within the next two weeks. The skater system, that's being moved over, as you're aware, is being moved over as we speak. The antenna was moved over, and the electrician is coming in this week to finalize the final movement of the cabinet that controls, with all the controls inside for the skater system. And that's the biggest, that's what's holding, you know, the last of the staff wing building. The garage area with the truck wash, they painted the ceilings this past weekend. And I believe that, well, no, the Permanent Building Committee, we have a meeting tomorrow at 10 o'clock, which is our weekly walkthrough, and I think we're finally going to start looking at, you know, finalizing punch list items for both buildings, which is pretty exciting. So with that, I mean, they, the contractors come in, you know, on time. I mean, he looked at December 31st. If he's not done with the outside building, I mean, he's going to be close, it may be a week or two at the most. And I shouldn't even say that, I, you know, they'll have a report tomorrow night. I know we have a Permanent Building Committee meeting tomorrow night also to finalize most of this, of the project.
Well, I've got to tell you, I've been in the DPW staff building, it's quite very, it's very, very nice. I hope the staff likes it.
Oh, absolutely.
It looks great.
Yep.
It has all the facilities they need, they have communications and everything else. It's really a very nice layout for the building, including washroom facilities and so forth.
Everything that we, what I think was projected at the beginning is exactly what is the final product. Is, you know, the Permanent Building Committee did a fantastic job with this. They were strapped with a, you know, one thinks of whatever the budget was, you know, and they kept it within that budget. And everybody should be proud of what's down there.
Well, all I can tell you is what I've seen, and it's very, very nice facility, so, thank you very much.
I missed the very beginning, I'm sorry, I was going to say, I missed the very beginning, when did you say you think they'll actually be moving in?
The DPW office, we're moving in now.
So they're moving in as we speak?
As we speak, yes.
Mr. Fuzy?
Thank you, Scott Fuzy, 411 Union, and I want to thank certainly the Permanent Building Committee, Jim and their staff, this has been a long time, many years in the making. And if you go down there, the bulk facilities are so much better than what they have. I think the guys would be clean, healthy building that they can work in, very modern in technology. The mechanics building is a really nice staff building, so it really looks nice, I'm glad for them, thank you.
Well, looking at how nice it is, I assume they only enter with suit, tie?
Yeah. I don't know about that. Could I just make one more comment, Mr. Chairman, seeing how, you know, thanks will come in time, but, you know, until you work with a group of people, you know, which are my fellow residents in Millis, the Permanent Building Committee, they've moved on from one project to the next, to the next, to the next, to the next, and without a break in between. And they've been, they meet, I mean, this isn't a part-time job for them. They work every single day at this. We meet once a week down at the, at the project, and once a month, we have a monthly meeting, and they review plans, they review the budgets, they review right down to a pencil that's bought. So I hope, if anybody's watching, you know, they should be proud of the people that are on that board and representing. We may not always, may not always agree on every single thing, but it gets done. And this is what, a project that, like I said, they just moved right from the school project to this, and they didn't skip a beat with that.
No, I think it's very well stated that we are very fortunate with the PBC to have a group of dedicated individuals who have worked with the town this well for this long. And it's just been great, and I speak from experience and I've seen it, so. Okay, any other comments?
No.
Questions? Okay. Thank you for that update, and now we're going to go to the progress update on PFS.
So I sent out today a timeline, sorry we're so late, but we did have a meeting today, and we updated the invitation for bids, and we're going to put the project out to bid. This is, as we've told from the beginning, this is going to be aggressive, and we're going to keep it within a short timeframe to get this out to bid. So the bids will be ready in early January, and the final bids will be sent back to the Town Administrator for opening on February 10th at 10, February 10th at 10:00 a.m. There'll be parts of the, sub-bids will be open on January 27th at 10:00 a.m. But I think the most important part is, and I think what you're looking at is the sentence, what's in the fourth paragraph down, contract final completion time will be 450 calendar days after the bid openings. That's aggressive, Kleinfeld is working to keep that, and they believe that even with the stock that they know that's out there, they're going to be able to come in at that, in that timeframe. This is all pending on a couple of things. We met earlier today, and the, I can give an update that the plans have been submitted to the Mass DEP, because they're eventually the ones that have to give the permit, you know, for this project to be built, to make sure that the system is working properly. We have asked them, and they said they're going to try to get that approved by the end of this month, by the 31st of this month. We went to the Planning Board last Tuesday night, and we have approvals from them, that I think was filed today. And so that we have a 20-day, you know, rescission period that somebody can come and, you know, file a complaint or, you know, disagree with it. We have a couple of questions with the Conservation Commission. Kleinfeld is working with them to hopefully get that ratified at their next meeting on January 10th. Any of these projects, if they do not get approved, it could change this entire, what you see in highlighted areas there, that could push off. And if it's, if it gets pushed off that far out, you know, we could lose our spot in the bidding process, that we feel. And I think the board agrees that, you know, we're in the right place at the right time to put this out to bid and get the right people to bid on it. So I just want to make you aware that there are some, still a couple of conditions at the Conservation Commission, and we are working with them. And hopefully by the next meeting, I'll be able to tell you that everything's good, and we're ready to move forward. But I will keep the, as always, he must be sick of listening to me talk to him about it every day, not sick, but, you know, that's, not at all. But, you know, we do, I do report back to the Town Administrator and, you know, the Chair of the Board, because this is ultimately our project. This is, you know, we're putting this out to bid for the Select Board, and I'll try to keep you up to date on everything that, you know, that transpires, you know, with our actions with the Conservation Commission.
I appreciate that, we did meet today, we had some discussions. I've tried to get a call in to Mr. Letterer, and hopefully I will talk with him shortly. Overall, it looks positive, but I want to reiterate what Mr. McKay just said, which is, this is a very aggressive schedule, but it's one that puts us ahead of the curve right now. Should we lose any time on any of these approvals, we could end up in very serious trouble being able to get this plant constructed within the appropriate time period, because it may not end up as just, we slipped a week here, therefore we slip a week there. A few weeks slip here could result in a year or two delay, seriously. So that's why it's imperative that we continue to move forward as aggressively as possible. Obviously, we want to try to meet all the concerns that are raised, but it's also important to keep in mind how important it is to move and get these things moved forward and passed in a timely fashion, as pointed out here, because these are in essence drop-dead dates. We cannot afford to slip past these dates.
Correct.
Fair enough.
That's...
Mr. McKay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have done a good job, and you're staying right on top of it.
Thank you.
I also want to pass on that Kleinfeld, as a group, has been stepping up to each of the questions and the issues, and hopefully we'll have the response back very shortly.
Once I get that by, I'm told by Wednesday, I will forward to the Board, so you can look at it.
And I'll make sure that the Board is aware of that through Mr. Gazinski, so that you have some idea of what's going on, so that we don't have any slippage in these areas. Okay, are there any other questions from the board?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, and from the audience, anyone?
I think so.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the review, to review and approve Select Board licenses for 2023, and we have them here.
Well, first off, it's 2022.
I'm just going to say, I'm just going to ask why we're going to a year.
We are not going to a year, that was a typo.
Okay.
We just noticed today, so I apologize. So these are the renewals, the Select Board issued licenses for the annual renewals for 2022. These are licenses that have already been issued to many of our different businesses in town. They include things like a common vitular, which is restaurants for restaurants, alcohol licenses, could be an entertainment license if you have TV or bands or anything like that, Class 1 and Class 2 are auto sale licenses. What else we have, pool tables, skeet and trap shooting, and the list goes on. So these are all, like I said, businesses that already have these in place, they're just looking to renew for the year. They've all paid their fees. Many have had to have inspections, we have something called a 106 inspection, that's for all the restaurant and alcohol licenses. They make sure that the fire equipment is safe, the building commissioner lets out and checks them out. There's a number of steps they have to go through to get on this list tonight for renewal, including talking to the treasurer, making sure they have paid up to date, or if they're on a payment plan for taxes if there's any issues. So this list before you is a good list, they have been well vetted, they should be all set. The only thing I will point out is there are a few that I have highlighted in yellow, and when we get to those, just ask me. It's just a couple of things that are contingencies when you actually vote to approve it. They may owe one thing, so you basically are going to approve it contingent upon them producing whatever it is by a certain date.
Excellent.
Makes sense?
Makes sense.
So you do not need to read the license numbers, nor do you need to read the address unless it still behooves you.
What we are going to do is read this list. I'll start off, and when I finally have had it, one of you will take over.
There's two pages. I was aware of that.
But I want you to understand that we're reading this list. It is also published.
Yes.
But we do want it read, so that there's no question. We've gone through every item on this list. So I'll start off, and at some point, I'll pass it on to my colleagues. 132 Exchange Street Incorporated, Richdale Food Shop, Alcohol Package Store, Wine and Malt, license type. Owner AJRK Incorporated, doing businesses, Millis House of Pizza, license type, common vitular. AM Vets Post 495 Millis, Mass. Incorporated. And this one, I'm going to have doing business as AM Vets and Karen.
Correct. So they have four different licenses, which are getting approved. The only thing they are missing is their official fire alarm report. They are aware of this. I would say that you should vote to approve the license pending submission of the fire alarm report prior to, you can say your January 10th meeting, you can say your January 24th meeting, whatever you prefer.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Would we, should we take this one out of order and then vote to approve them?
I would. I would vote that, because you can basically, right, you can read them all and vote to approve them, and then those.
I think what I'll do is I'll pass on all the yellows.
Okay.
And just, I'll start reading the rest of them, and then pass it on to others. Thank you, Craig. That's a good point. Avalinas, doing businesses Avalinas, and it's for license type, all alcohol restaurant, common vitular and entertainment. Barrett and Johnson Enterprises Incorporated, doing businesses Victory Lane Bar and Grill, and license type is all alcohol restaurant, automatic amusement, common vitular and entertainment. Bethany House Ministries, doing business as Bethany, Bethany House Hope Chest, license type, junk metals dealer. Big Beef Incorporated, doing businesses Big Beef, common vitular and entertainment. Black Cow Ice Cream, doing businesses Black Cow Ice Cream, common vitular. Comcan Incorporated, doing businesses Comcan Retail Marijuana. Country Kitchen Donuts and Muffins Incorporated, doing businesses Country Kitchen Donuts and Muffins, common vitular and entertainment. We'll do a few more. El Karma Incorporated, doing businesses Marino's Pizza, common vitular. Export Auto of Millis, doing businesses Export Auto of Millis, a class two license. Farm Street Auto Sales, doing businesses Farm Street Auto Sales, a class three license. And I'm going to pass off to you, Erin Finn.
Finfer and Feather Club, doing businesses Finfer and Feather Club, license type skeet and trap shooting. Foreign Car Repair, doing businesses Foreign Car Repair, license type class two. Jalapa Mexican Grill LLC, doing businesses Jalapa Mexican Grill, license type, all alcohol restaurant, common vitular.
And I'm just, sorry, Erin, so Lilac House was yellow, but now they are okay.
Okay.
You can read that one.
Ju Zing Incorporated, doing business as Lilac House Restaurant, license type alcohol on premises wine and malt, and common vitular. Kiara LLC, doing businesses One Stop Liquors, license type all alcohol package store. Main Street Mobile Incorporated, doing businesses Main Street Mobile, license type alcohol package store wine and malt. Millis Donuts Incorporated, doing businesses Dunkin' Donuts, license type, common vitular and entertainment. Millis Fitness Incorporated, doing businesses Encompass Fitness, license type, common vitular and entertainment. Millis Package Store Corp., doing businesses Harkeys, license type, all alcohol package store. Millis Used Auto Parts Incorporated, doing business as Millis Used Auto Parts, license type, class three, and Junk's Metal Dealer. Do you want to pick up from this?
Sure. Namaste Convenience Inc., DBA Namaste, license type alcohol package store wine and malt. Nappertandies is yellow. Should I skip it?
You can skip that one.
Okay. I was all set with that until the last one was changed. NEAS LLC, New England Auto Salvage, class, license type, class two, class three. Parfa?
Parfa, I think it is.
Parafa.
Parafa. LLC, doing business as the Italian Grocery and Deli, common vitral. Pathways Center Inc., Nirvana Tea House and Cafe, common vitral. Primavera Inc., yellow.
Skip that one.
R&amp;R Auto Repairs Inc., Millis Collision, class two. Robert and Ellen Santos, Bob's Autobody, class two. Roach Brothers Supermarket, Roach Brothers Supermarket, common vitral. Ryan Family, skip it. The first column should be yellow.
I know, right? Sorry about that.
Saigon Restaurant, doing business as Saigon Restaurant, common vitral. Solia Group LLC, doing businesses McDonald's, common vitral. St. George's and St. Mary's LLC, Louise Pizzeria, common vitral. Stacked Enterprises LLC, Stacked Sandwich and Slice Company, all alcohol restaurant, common vitral and entertainment. Swami Ne Song Corp., Liquor World, all alcohol package store. Fest Pizza Inc., Cravings Pizza and Ice Cream, common vitral and entertainment. Twist Bakery and Cafe Inc., doing businesses Twist Bakery and Cafe, common vitral. WT Homes Transport Company Inc., doing businesses WT Homes Transport Company Inc., class three.
And I'm sorry, I stand corrected. We had one more come in, which was Primavera. So they are all set to go. They are no longer yellow.
Okay.
Primavera Inc., Primavera Restaurante, doing business as, I'm sorry, license type, all alcohol restaurant, common vitral and entertainment.
Okay.
Second.
It's removed and seconded to.
Issue the license.
Issue licenses to the businesses that were just named. Take a vote from the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Karen.
When we go back, if we go back to the AM Vets.
Yep.
You can issue the license contingent upon them providing a fire alarm report by a date certain. As I said, you could, you could either say January 10th, your next meeting, or you can give them until the 24th.
Unless there's a particular problem, I'd suggest that we go for January 10th.
Yeah.
Right there.
Get it to us. I'll take a motion on that.
I'll make a motion. We issue the AM Vets Post 495 Millis, Mass. Inc., doing businesses AM Vets, and All Alcohol Veterans Club, automatic, I thought you were going to say auto for a second, automatic amusement, entertainment, and pool table license types, contingent on providing a valid fire alarm test certificate.
Report, yeah.
Report by January 10th.
Second.
It's removed and seconded to issue a license to the AM Vets, based on the contingencies as noted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Lilac has been done.
Nappertandies is the next one. They have to issue a sprinkler report. So you can do the same thing.
Yep.
Contingent upon the dump.
Okay, is the January 10th contingent?
Yes. And I'll let them know when our report back at the January 10th meeting. If you have it, and if they don't at that point, then we figure it out.
I'll make a motion to issue the all alcohol restaurant license, common vitral and entertainment license to Nappertandies Millis Inc., doing businesses Nappertandies, contingent on a sprinkler report by January 10th.
Second.
It's removed and seconded to issue a license to Nappertandies, as noted previously, with contingency set for a sprinkler report to be issued to us by January 10th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And the last one is Ryan Family Amusements, and they owe both the fire alarm and the sprinkler report.
Okay. So Ryan Family Amusements, doing business as Ryan Family Amusements, and to issue a license for alcohol on premise wine and malt, automatic amusement, 37 Bowling Alley 22, entertainment. And this is contingent upon both fire alarm and, what was the other?
Sprinkler report.
Sprinkler. By January 10th, is that adequate to them?
Correct.
Second.
Okay.
And they have been inspected by the, by the fire chief and the building inspector. It's just that they need the physical reports.
That's fine. So it's removed and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So that covers all of them, I believe.
It does. Well done.
Okay. So the licenses are done. We have water and sewer department commitments.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, those are, we have none for tonight. We'll have some for your next meeting.
I was just going to say, I don't see it here. So, okay, that's great. And do we have the draft minutes?
We do.
They are in here. And actually, prior to that, I did want to give a quick shout out to Maureen Casey, our department assistant, who did yeoman's work in making sure that all of these licensees got their information to us as they should. She even, you know, she calls people and got the information in, so she was a real help for this. So just thank you to Maureen.
Good.
Great. That's excellent. Okay.
I move that we approve the draft minutes from November 22nd, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the draft minutes from November 22nd, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And, actually, I just have one item, Mr. Chairman. It's not formally on your agenda, but I wanted to bring it up. It's in regards to the Christmas holiday next week. Many of the communities around here are closing their municipal offices a little early on the 23rd. And actually, Karen did a survey on her listserv to find out. And overall, it was about a 50-50. About 20 were closing early, 20 weren't. I do know that Medfield and Medway are closing early. So based upon all of that, and the tough year it's been, I do recommend the board consider closing the non-emergency municipal offices on December 23rd at 1:00 p.m. So that would be the, this building, of course, the Council on Aging, the DPW, and the library. All the offices are going to be closed on the 24th anyway, in recognition of the holiday. But, so just something for your consideration. And it won't, obviously, your next meeting isn't until January 10th, so you'd have to take that up tonight in order to.
Sure.
Approve that if you'd so choose.
We did discuss this earlier today, so I'll throw it out to the board if you have any concerns, questions, anything.
I'll make a motion to close all non-emergency town buildings at 1:00 p.m. on the 23rd.
Second.
It's removed and seconded to take the town administrator's recommendation to close all of non-emergency town facilities on November 20, December 23rd at 1:00 p.m. I was going to say, I'll poll the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So.
Great. Thank you.
Please, let's get the word out to the town employees. I'm sure they'll.
We will, and happy holidays to you and everyone in town.
In fact, I suspect they already have the word now.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to talk about our schedule for a moment. I would like to meet more frequently than is on the schedule there. I'm afraid we're going to start getting into budget crunch and planning and other things. And I just didn't feel we were adequately prepared for the last town meeting. There were questions on the, on the capital planning that I didn't feel were adequately addressed, the whole grant with the, the electric charging station and others. I would like to try to get things a little bit, get things to us sooner from those other committees, so we can study them more and also scale up our meeting schedule, so that we aren't left in a lurch towards the end, just ratifying quickly items. I don't know that, I'm not saying anything prior to the 10th, obviously, and I think probably January 24th onward, a more frequent meeting schedule might be of a benefit. And getting it out early, so we can plan for it.
Yeah, I think that makes some sense. I think we have to look at what information we have available at any given time as to whether it makes sense to hold the meetings. I certainly, from my perspective, have no particular problem if we want to hold more frequent meetings.
Well, I would like to get a planning meeting in early, maybe the 10th even, so we can let committees know, subcommittees know, when we expect the reports back. Because honestly, receiving the capital planning committee and having one meeting after we received it was kind of tight to get all the answers we needed for town meeting.
Oh, you mean in this last fall?
Yeah.
Meeting, yeah. That was understood, but we, you know, we will do better for them. But I agree with you in general principle, that I'm not, I don't know whether we, whether meeting more frequently in January, which I'm perfectly open to, do, if it makes sense. What we need to understand is how quickly these other committees and departments can get us the information we need. If we can get that starting by late January, then I have no problem with increasing the frequency of the meetings as we see it necessary. I know we want to keep the ones we've got.
Yep.
If we can get some more information, particularly on items, and I'll be very candid, I want to have much more open discussion on a number of issues, such as the stormwater, on the, water sewer, on the water sewer connections, particularly the sewer connections for the town, whether we want a bylaw, what the wording for the bylaw should be, how we should proceed on that, and any other issues that we're going to have to confront as a town, that may not have been brought to our attention even as yet, but that we're going to have to deal with, and that ought to get out there in front of the town as quickly as possible. I certainly can't say that I'm aware of any specifics right now, but if we do determine there are some, we've got to get them out there quickly. I don't want last minute, as Craig was saying, where we're scrambling during the last three or four weeks to try to fit in a whole series of meetings, when we still have to get published materials out to the community. So I think it makes sense.
And I would rather have town departments come before us, before they come to the finance committee. And the finance committee is going to be proposing, you know, inviting people in relatively soon to talk about, I'm assuming.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I'll be sending out a draft finance, or draft budget schedule to the board. I will get that out later this week, so that you could discuss it and approve it at your meeting on January 10th.
That would be good.
And the plan would be to meet with the department heads, all the department heads, around the first week of February.
Right.
Their budgets would be due by the end of January, and then they would start meeting with the finance committee after they meet with this board. And so we'll just need to talk about a specific day. Perhaps there is a day of the week that you, that the board may be available for a full day, that we can literally meet with department heads from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and go through most of, most of those budgets. That's worked well the past couple of years, and I think it's something that we probably should continue. And that way, it then allows the finance committee to start its work, so they have a couple of months. But that way, the board can ask all its questions, and has time to, you know, work with department heads, determine on what the final budget proposal will be.
I will comment that Mr. Gazinski did share a calendar with me earlier today with specific dates for just that. And it was set up for literally the first week of February to go through that.
That's good. I think I have two large concerns about any schedule we put together. I think that the capital planning committee information needs to come to us a month prior to closing the warrant. It can't come a week prior to closing the warrant, because that is really one of the biggest discussion items.
Yep.
And secondly, the sewer bylaw, if we have any hope of passing any sewer bylaw, we have to have information to us a month before we close the warrant. We can't, we can't keep waiting. So if those are two items we can set early in the agenda, and give direction to those subcommittees to, to work on early. Because honestly, receiving anything from the capital committee, planning committee, a week prior to the closing of the warrant, to me is pretty much, you know, not, not helpful.
And I will say, last year, the capital planning committee, as I recall, got to this board at least a month before.
For the, for the fall town meeting.
No, for the.
The spring town meeting.
Spring town meeting, yeah.
I felt the following was very rushed.
The fall was a bit of a problem, but I understand. But I do know where you're coming from, and I concur.
Yeah.
In terms of the sewer bylaw, we've been talking about it now for a year, year and a half. We have brought it to the committee's attention. I have not heard anything. We have got to get at least a good wording in place and communication with the community as rapidly as possible. So I would like to see that move forward in some fashion as quickly as possible. If we can't get it out of the committee, then I'd say, we have to go forward with putting together some kind of a draft and begin getting the information out to the community and having hearing, I won't say, I hate to use the word hearing, because it's not technically a hearing, but you know what I'm saying, discussion here.
Forums.
So that anyone who wants to can.
Yeah.
Comment, add their advice. The object is to get the information out and let people have a chance to assimilate it and get back to us. And we want to do that as rapidly as possible. it and get back to us, and we want to do that as rapidly as possible. I am all for having that in place so that we can start those discussions by mid-February, to be very frank.
Yeah.
I think we need to give it as much time as possible. It's very important. I have talked with Mr. McKay by the middle to, and I think he said by the middle of January, he hopes to have a complete count of the number of connections where people have not actually connected who have the rights and have, there's a particular term.
Paid the betterment.
Paid the betterments for connecting.
And then on that same issue, I'd like to get a copy, I've still been asking for the breakdown of the cost. I mean, I got the total co, you know, but, but until we have that count, it's useless. It's impossible to figure out the cost, fixed cost.
Again, I think we'll be able to get all that. There's no reason we can't ask for that even now from the DPW. I know that we have asked before, so let's try to get that, Mr. Gazinski.
And the third committee that I would say is important is the CPC CPA Committee, not the Capital Planning Committee, but the CPA Committee, which is also CPC.
Community Preservation?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, Community Preservation Committee, because, for instance, this came up with the playground at the last town meeting where they said they were considering it, but we had, they hadn't reached a final recommendation on it and such, so those are important things as we're trying to put together comprehensive budget. We have to know what each one of the subcommittees is saying. So I think that any recommendations or reports that they're going to bring to us have to be about a month before the closing the warrant date so we can make sure we understand them all before we vote to close the warrant, because as I'm now understanding, our vote to close the warrant is our vote to endorse the items on it, and I'm not going to endorse something that I haven't had a chance to look at closely, so.
Understood. But I think more important, in my estimation, is not just that we endorse the warrant, but that the community has had an opportunity to hear what we have to say and to weigh in on that, which, again, I agree with my comrade here, that we, my colleague, that we need to try to get these things in front of our board in a more timely fashion than perhaps has been done in the past. So, again, if we can get those boards in front of us, preferably in the, if not late February, early March timeframe, that gives plenty of time for us to look at them, for the community to review them, and for all sorts of questions and concerns to be raised, if any, so that we get a better understanding throughout the community prior to town meeting.
Well, and honestly, I'm less concerned about the community reviewing it prior to us making our recommendations than, I want to give enough time after we close the warrant that we fully understand everything to recommend on it. So, so I don't, I think that we have to understand it much clearer and we come in at a higher level than a, than, I think there's two phases to it, but I think that I'm very concerned that we're not getting the information in a timely enough fashion to make a recommendation that would then go to the public.
Well, I think that was part of what we're just saying, so it's, the bottom line is we want to try to expedite some of what's been going on that hasn't, that has tended to slip to later dates than we might have liked in the past, so.
Mr. Chair.
Let's do it we can in that regard.
If I may.
Yes.
Just to piggyback on one thing you said, specific to the sewer connections. If I recall, at the, before town meeting last year, we had asked, we had tasked the committee with just the sole purpose of coming up with some form of a bylaw.
Yep.
That we could consider. We did not receive that. So we do have, I do recall that there was some kind of draft wording that was vetted through our council, and my personal feeling would be that we start as soon as possible, I mean, if there's, you know, wiggle room on the agenda for the January 24th, I think we should start discussing that information, and if the, if the committee at hand isn't, isn't able to give us something, then we need to just do it, so.
Okay. I would go along with that with the understanding that we get whatever that draft bylaw was up to this point to each of you as members. That you make comments on it that we can then pass on to Mr. Gazinski and to town council to get it into a more final wording.
Mm-hmm.
There's another piece to that that we have also asked the committee for, which is to put together a presentation to the community that gives an understanding of what the issues are that we're trying to deal with so that they have a better understanding of why the concerns and what the implications are in one simple to understand.
I will start that effort.
Okay. And there has been stuff put together, and we will get to what information has been done up to this point. This is where it would be useful if we could talk with one another. We can't directly, but we can through our town administrator. Please add your notes, add your comments, get to the town administrator, and he will get back to whoever, in your case, is handling that.
Yeah.
And we want to, I have no problem with us moving forward.
And if we have to have maybe a working meeting, maybe we could schedule one of those.
I would agree with you.
One of the Zoom meetings in the day or something, yeah.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I think it's a good idea to bang out a draft wording in the sewer bylaw quickly, get it over to the enterprise committee for their review and comment, and then it keeps everything moving forward quickly.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because I do value what they have to say about it, but we can, we can maybe move this along a little quicker.
Yeah, we, we value what they have to say, but we can't have that as an impediment to the process.
And I don't think it will be once we give them something to start working on, because they did have something before. We had started with a document, I think this is a good way to just kick it off.
Well, I think that's what we're going to be starting with, is that document that we had, and we're just going to move forward on it, so they are welcome to add their comments at this time.
I would say after we finish our document, we should hand it over, and then we should get comments back. I don't want to write a, I don't want to design a giraffe, you know, a horse designed by a committee. I want to get a, something we are good with, have them comment on it and critique it, and not get six people in a room trying to write it all at once.
Yep.
Understood.
Yeah.
Understood.
Just quickly, Mr. Gazinski, we're going to be opening the warrant on the 10th of January, is it, or is it February that we should put it open?
We usually open in February.
And when does it close typically?
Usually open for two weeks.
Well, see, this is the thing, we, it's closed as an official two-week opening period.
Right.
The board doesn't usually sign it until around the first week of April.
Yeah.
So there is, there's a lag period between when it, when it's closed to when the board signs it, and it's during that period that we finalize all the article language and everything there, so that, you know, a lot of that had to, has to do with knowing when or what the anticipated revenues are going to be for the next year. I mean, the later we go, the better idea we have. The non-revenue related articles, I mean, can be finalized at any time that, that the information is there and we're able to finish that.
And it's also important to keep in mind the board has the right to open the warrant and close it at almost any time during that period so that we can, in fact, make changes or whatever if we have to.
Right, and usually, unless there's a petition article, usually the articles that are on the warrant when it, when it closes to the public.
Yeah.
Are the standard articles.
Yeah.
They're not, the, the special articles at that point, I mean, that are submitted by boards or committees or departments, those are articles that, you know, again, the board could say you'll accept for consideration, but the board can remove articles, except for petition articles, the board can remove articles at any time.
Yeah. Is there, is there a reason why we open in February for two weeks instead of opening in end of March?
If we open, like, stay in the end of March, and we had some petition articles that were, that needed some study or were difficult to be able to address in time for the town meeting, it wouldn't leave us a lot of time to handle that.
Okay.
So that most towns do have an earlier period for the open part of the warrant, but the board always reserves the right to add and remove articles. Again, the only article you can't remove is a petition article that was filed in a timely manner, but the board always has the option to add or remove articles up until the time you approve it and sign it.
Right.
Then I'd like to amend my previous comments. I'd like to have a finalized warrant one month before the, you know, before the finance committee really needs to get. I'd like to have all this information one month before we finalize the warrant.
Yeah.
Yeah, not close the warrant.
Right.
So make the minutes read that way.
We'll do the best we can on all of that. That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Okay. Was there anything else that we wanted to discuss at this point?
I do not believe so, Mr. Chairman. I think, I would just request the board consider going into executive session. I don't have anything else for the open session.
Okay. Okay, we're now getting ready to adjourn to executive session. The executive session tonight, if I can dig up my notes, is to conduct strategy session in preparation for union and non-union personnel of the police chief, and Massachusetts Coalition of Police, local 171, and Millis Police Association dispatchers. So that's what we'll be discussing tonight. Okay, do I hear a motion to?
We'll be.
We're going to adjourn to executive session, and do we have to?
You'll be, you'll be, you'll be voting, go into executive session, and you'll be coming back into open session afterwards for the sole purpose of adjourn.
Of adjourning the meeting. Okay. So do we need to take a vote to go into executive?
Yeah, send it a roll call vote to go into executive session.
I'll poll the board to go into executive session. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. Thank you very much. Good night, and we look forward to seeing you at our next meeting presently scheduled for January 10th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.